A very good evening to you, and we welcome you to the September 7th, 2021, regular meeting of Orville City Council. We'll open up our meeting this evening in prayer, and we have Mike Bone here with us this evening.
Let's be in a spirit of prayer. Creator God, you have given us this beautiful day in the same 24 hours everybody else has. The folks gathered in this room have focused their time and their energy and their gifts on the care for this community. So bless them in their deliberations and in their work together this evening. Let wisdom and good words carry every policy decision. We offer this prayer to you in the name of Christ, amen.
Clerk, could please call the roll?
Handwork.
Here.
Aspiras.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Mosley.
Here.
Foy.
Here.
Widmer.
Excuse.
Wilson.
And you should have received the minutes of the regular meeting on July 19th, 2021, as well as the special meetings we had over our break, August 2nd and August 9th of 2021. We have a motion to approve those minutes.
Mosley, motions.
Mr. Mosley, motions.
I'll second.
Mr. Morrison, seconds.
Aspiras.
Abstain.
Morrison.
Yes.
Mosley.
Yes.
Foy.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Handwork.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We, next on our agenda is public comment. We have no public comment scheduled for this evening, so periodically I just put out a reminder there if you would like to speak to any issue before council. Simply turn in a request to our clerk on the Friday by 4:00, I believe, before that next council meeting, and you'll be invited to have a chance to speak to council about any matter that you like that pertains to council. And you have three minutes available to do that. So we'll move on then in our agenda to our standing committee reports, and we'll begin with our Parks and Recreation Committee that is led by Mr. Handwork.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation has not met. However, I would like to propose scheduling a meeting in October. At this point, I don't think we have to agree on a date quite yet, but I'm looking at October 11th, which is a Monday. We do not have a standard council meeting that day. So I was looking at October 11th at 6:00, and there's a couple of things we wanted to review. The maintenance needs for 2022, talk about the things that we need to do for the park system, and then also the capital improvement projects that we would be looking towards for 2022 as well. And then the last part there would just be reviewing the comprehensive park plan status of where we stand with that. So I would look for roughly 60 minutes, and I would put it out there for October 11th, tentatively.
I know we have some members of the administration that are involved with Utilities Board at 6:30, so there is a conflict there. What would be a time that would work for those of you who are involved in that meeting? Mr. Wheeler may want to attend this committee meeting, I imagine.
I need to go to Utility Board.
Oh, you don't go Utility Board?
No, sir.
Okay. So Mayor and...
Really, I could stay till 6:30 and go Utility Board if we need to do that, so...
Okay.
We do have our Utility Board.
Okay. Yeah, and then of course, Mrs. Foy and the rest of Utility Board. You need 60 minutes, so I would suggest if we go 6:00, then those who need to be involved with Utility Board would need to duck out at 6:30 and miss the remainder of the meeting, or we could start at, say, 7:00 PM and be done at 8:00. Any preference here among the members of council?
I would think 7:00 would suit. That way everyone could attend.
Starting at 7:00?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what day are we looking?
I'm fine with that.
October 11th.
October 11th, it's a Monday.
So we'll leave that penciled in our calendars for now, and then we'll frame that up by the next meeting?
Yep, that's great.
All right, very good. So 7:00 PM on October 11th is the date that we're shooting for. All right, very good. Anything else?
That is it.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to our Utilities Committee, and Mrs. Foy.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. President. The Utilities Committee has not met, so I have no report. However, there will be three ordinances we'll be discussing tonight, and I know the director will speak to them more, but the first two are going to be regarding applying for some grants, and there is some urgency behind them, so looking to pass those tonight. And the third involves some negotiations, which always, you know, extra time to do that is a good thing, so we'll talk more, but...
Okay. All right, thank you very much. And then our Ordinance and Personnel Committee, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance and Personnel has not met, therefore I have no report.
All right, thank you. And our Transportation Committee, Mr. Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three things. One of them, Mr. Wheeler will speak more about this. OPWC grant project started today. Actually, I think they're working on Curve Works and Curve Work and a few other things. Steve Wheeler will talk more about that. I did hear today that sidewalk engineering is back for the final phase of our sidewalks project. Currently, Dan, our engineer, is sifting through everything, trying to get information. As soon as that information is together, we're planning to have some sort of meeting, you know, with details that's narrowed down to each specific property. So we have those details in front of us, and we can figure out how to put this, you know, put this project into completion.
Okay.
And the final one, there is Resolution 3621. I would like to get that passed tonight. It's in reference to a salt bin. We're taking down an older one, putting up a new one. It is budgeted. Currently, we're going to have to pay a little bit over budget because of the cost of steel that's continuing to go up. So if we don't move on this, it's just going to continue to go up. This is going to help our capacity of being able to store salt instead of getting rid of it or not having enough to where we could be more efficient when it comes to salting and responding to our storms. I know Brian Nemo is here for any questions, as well as Mr. Wheeler. If there's any other questions, I, you know, definitely like to kind of get that hashed out tonight. With that, I have nothing else, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Then our Health and Safety Committee, led by Mr. Aspiras. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. Health and Safety has not met, and I have no report, sir.
All right, thank you. Then we'll move to our Finance Committee, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee has not met, so I have no report.
All right, thank you. We have no special committee reports this evening, and so we'll move on to our administrative reports, and we begin with Mayor Handwork.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to first of all welcome council back from your break that was the most unlike any break we've ever had since we met half of the time anyway, but that's the way it goes sometimes, so appreciate those meetings. We had lots of great events this summer, and I'm really glad, especially the way things are going again right now, that we were able to complete all those, starting off with our Fourth of July and our Firefighters Association celebration and all that goes with that, and then the all-class reunion just two weeks after that, and then the Lions Ribbon Music Fest right at the end of July, and then we finished up with Orville Community Day there in August. And I would like to just thank all the people that are involved in all of those things volunteer-wise, because they're all such great events, and a lot of people have a lot of good times with those, but that wouldn't happen without all the people that volunteered to do those kind of jobs and work a lot tirelessly to make sure those are good times for the general public. So really glad that we were able to have those. I'm glad we don't have anything scheduled in the next month, because I don't know where that'll go from there, but we'll see how that happens. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to our Safety Service Director, Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Trash pickup is delayed one day this week due to Labor Day, so trash will be picked up on Friday this week instead of Thursday. Storybook Trail Construction on Vine Street, which is across from McDonald's, catty corner for McDonald's, in the back of McDonald's, that has been completed, the construction has. Orville Public Library is working on getting the books ordered so we can get those installed, and we also then will schedule ribbon cutting as well and try to get word out on that trail, which we are really excited about the addition to the park. As Mr. Mosley mentioned, OPWC project did start today. They are starting on Curve Work and Basins. They are starting on Crestview and Evergreen. The other streets in that project are Maple, North Walnut, Lake, West Paradise, and West High. And that's my report for this evening.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to our Utilities Director, Mr. Bretiger.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Mr. Foy mentioned, we do have free resolutions under new business. The only two other items that I just wanted to add was August was a pretty busy month from the generation side of the electric business due to the longer periods of peak. We did have the plan up a good part of the time in August. We're receiving our reports back from our transmission system operators and owners, and right now we seem to have hit all of our top five peaks that we needed to hit for the year. You know, we were up probably 20 times in total since the beginning of the year, not knowing when those peaks were until they were over there, but we should be in pretty good shape here unless thankfully warm up in September there, so that I just wanted to report that out. And also at the Utility Board meeting last Monday, the board did approve keeping the power cost adjustment factor frozen again. This will keep our electric rates the same since 2017. And with that, that would conclude my report tonight, sir.
Thank you. I think I wanted to make sure I read that right, that in the email that was distributed today, that PGM reported that five times this year we've already hit a peak that was higher than last year? Did I read that correctly?
Yes, and given the state of where the economy was at last year, that sounds like a lot, but we were down 10% maybe from where those peaks were the prior year, so... And that's what made running last year and this year so more unpredictable for us. We probably brought the plan up a third as many times last year and this year, not really knowing where those new customer demands are at, just due to the shift in energy, mainly due to COVID impacts last year, and then just how things have shaken out in 2021 has made those predicts a little bit more unpredictable, unfortunately, for the industry. But yes, there were several records that fell from 2020, but anything compared to 2020 is pretty much an anomaly going forward.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. And our Finance Director, Ms. Trimble.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to report that the 2020 audit is complete. There were no significant issues. Council members should have received a copy of the audit opinion as well as the CAFR. It should come from the Zook Accounting Firm. I'll also be posting the CAFR to the city's website in case anyone else is interested in reviewing that. We have submitted the CAFR to the GFOA for consideration for the Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. We should hear something back in the fall whether we'll receive that award again. As far as the American Rescue Plan, we did receive our first payment of $440,950. We'll receive the second payment for that same amount in August of 2022. As council knows, some of the funds will be used for a camera system for security around the city. Water and wastewater are also getting estimates together for a few projects that will be beneficial for the city for a rate, from a rate perspective, customer rate perspective. If you've read through any of the ARPA guidelines, water and wastewater improvement projects seem to be a major focus of those, so going to see if we can get some completed with those funds. I did have the investment report included in your council packet. This is for the quarter ending June 30th. I do not need council to take any formal action. I just need the minutes to reflect that we did distribute that. It also provided June and July fund balance reports. If you look down through those, there are a few funds that have negative net income. It's really just a timing issue with the exception of the utilities, and that is due to working capital transfer, so you'll see that trickle out later in the year. If you have any questions, feel free to call me about those. Tonight, though, I just need a motion from council to accept those reports subject to audit.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Wilson moves.
I'll second.
Second, Mrs. Foy.
Morrison?
Yes.
Mosley?
Yes.
Foy?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Handwork?
Yes.
Aspiras?
Yes.
All eyes worship pastors.
Thank you. And for my report, just a quick update. We've been moving slowly on a project to increase our capabilities here as a body to both record and to distribute the content of our meetings. So we've met with, well, we had an online demo, I should say, with a software vendor that really increases our capability on the Internet for people to be able to search for and find content regarding whatever subjects council is discussing. It actually takes you right to that part of the meeting, and so you can either read or listen to that portion of the meeting, so it increases accessibility that way, and also providing some hardware here in council chambers to improve our video coverage for those, where in those occasions we need to stream these meetings to homes, including things like every time we have a presentation, we have to stop the meeting, we dim the lights, we bring the curtain or the screen down, and so we could install monitors, you know, a couple of different monitors here around the room, and improve the capabilities that all of us would have to present content, right, from our iPads or from a guest that we might have here. And then, of course, what we found, especially during COVID, was a couple of people needed to remote in on our meetings, and we provide that capability as well. So I'll get back to you when we get some of those figures back. We'll meet with the administration and get their thoughts, and then we'll sit down and talk about some of the proposals that these folks are making for us, but they have worked with other communities here in our area and seemed very knowledgeable, and we had the IT folks here too from the city involved as well. So that's an update there. We have no old business this evening. Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Please move over to the law director.
We did. So I was just wanting to see if she was paying attention. Yeah. Mrs. Kirkbride, do you have a report for us?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report.
All right. I crossed you off prematurely.
That's all right.
I apologize, so... All right. No old business for this evening, and so we'll move on to new business. Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution 3221. I move this resolution be placed on first reading.
Second.
Second, Mr. Handwork.
Mosley?
Yes.
Foy?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Handwork?
Yes.
Aspiras?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
All eyes worship pastors.
Good, thank you.
Resolution 3221. A resolution authorizing the Utility Director to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program for grant or loan funds and/or agreements as required to obtain said funds and declaring an emergency.
Very good. Who would like to speak to this? Mr. Bretiger.
Yeah, I'll speak to this one, and the same narrative will apply to the second one. We have the opportunity to go down a kind of a triple track on applying for grant funds for water and wastewater infrastructure projects. The first one, Ms. Trimble mentioned earlier this evening, the OPWC one, we're familiar with that. We do a lot of that on the street side. We occasionally use some of those funds to address water and wastewater projects. So this resolution and the one following us, we're submitting for grants for the same projects in all, in both of water and wastewater utilities. We're not sure if we're going to be successful in any, or both, or none, but we have an opportunity to deal with the additional burdens that come along with this free money that we get. So because of that, we're, we've looked at our needs list, and we just didn't want to pass up on the opportunity to, while these grant funds were available, we hope we would apply for as many of them as we could get AR on our five-year planning process. But let me describe to you what we plan on submitting. For the water utility, we are wanting to do a comprehensive water modeling study. This will allow us to take a look at our existing water distribution system. Not only will it, we've already got our weak areas identified, but this will help us address low-flow areas. Our recent project up on North High Street was an example of that. We had two parallel lines. One of those is an older line that was installed decades ago, and we had a new line that was barely used, and that helped improve the water flow, water pressures on in that area, water quality in that area. And this study will allow us to give a very good comprehensive voice, so when we have new businesses coming in town or a significant expansion in the residential area, new development area, we can easily identify how far back we need to go in our water main systems. So that study right now, and again, these are just funds to perform the study portion. If we would go forward with some of these projects, dependent on the cost, we would come back with future legislation. But the study that we're looking at is in the neighborhood of around $75,000. Both of these grants that we're talking about this evening do come with a matching fund component to that. There's these entities like you to put some skin in the game there too, so all these projects will come with a matching component. The second project that we're applying for grants for is to rehab the central water tower that will be recoding the inside and the outside, as well as the valve vault system that's located underneath the tower. That tower is our oldest tower that was put in in the 1960s. It is still in very, very good shape. We had it inspected a couple of years ago, long as it came up with the required maintenance and were to rehab that tower next year. And for the engineering to do those two items related to that tower, that's in the neighborhood of around $40,000. The second one is a water main upgrade. This water main feeds the industrial part up on Collins Boulevard, so that water main that we're looking at replacing or doing engineering on begins at Hosteller and continues north up to Collins. And that line will allow us to be able to loop feed that industrial park up there. Right now, there's just one line heading north. We have any problems with that line, and we have some significant supply issues in there. This engineering will allow us to kind of run a, bring in a line from the west easterly to tie into that, to provide a kind of a backup water supply to that. And engineering for that work will be in the neighborhood of $130,000. We have two grants that we're going to seek for the wastewater utility. One of those is to install a backup inlet screen to the wastewater treatment plant. About five years ago, the EPA mandated prescreening of the material coming into the water treatment plant, and this will serve to back that one up. Our new wastewater treatment superintendent that came on board with us just last month was the former water wastewater treatment superintendent for the city of Wister, and all of their plants have backup screens at their facilities, and he was surprised that the EPA did not have that as a requirement for our facility. So we are, we'll be working with the EPA and our engineers on that one to see how well that will fit into the existing screen that we installed roughly five years ago. That total project will be roughly $220,000. And again, this is just a grant to seek that. If we would go forward or would be awarded this project, we would be coming back with legislation to actually do the engineering, but this is right now to see if we can apply for those funds. The last one will be an infrastructure study for our collection system. When we have significant rain events, it puts some pretty expensive burdens on the plant. It pretty much triples the capacity requirements on that wastewater treatment plant. Sometimes we do bypass a certain amount of that product into exterior holding basins. This study will kind, and mainly is because of the lines that have been underground for so long, ground shifts, they belong that line, homes that were built and installed up until the 70s had their roof and garage floor, driveway drains also tied into the sewer systems as opposed to the stormwater systems like are required to this time. So when we have those large rain events, just additional water, which is mainly rain water, we're processing through that plant, takes on a lot of burdens, puts us in a situation where we're subject to violation. And when that plant becomes overburdened, that means that the lines are running at or above their design capacity, and that can result in sewer backups. So this collection system study will allow us to identify where those main sources of water infiltration are at. We'll start out at the farthest remote sections of our system and work our way in to identify those large areas of what we call water infiltration, seal those up. We'll get some linings in place. Some of those lines may physically have to be replaced, but this will model our system and allow us to do the camera work and some other testing and investigation to identify where that's at. And that study is supposed to be in the neighborhood of around $183,000. Both of these, this application for the OPWC and the resolution that follows from the Ohio Department of Development have timing requirements. OPWC, those applications are being submitted as we speak. The Department of Development, those applications are due the end of next week. So we have to have these letters or these resolutions in place. The Utility Board passed both of these resolutions, allowing us to submit the applications for both of these grants at last Monday night's meeting. So that was a lot of information there. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this one, and just take this one and we'll copy it over for Resolution 3321 when we get to that.
Yes, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. So with respect to water pressure, does the testing test the existing structure then as well? You'll get an indication of what you can add, I would assume, to take into account.
Right, right. Yeah, we actually have three separate water districts in, throughout the city, and they all operate at about the same pressure, but not exactly, exactly the same, but they, yeah, those will also make sure as part of this that the sizing is proper because of what's happened. They were installed 20, 30, 60 years or so ago. Most of the time when they were installed, they were installed oversized, but as neighborhoods grew, businesses started adding on there. We do have some areas that, that over the years, either due to leaks or low-pressure issues, have been upgraded, but those have pretty much kind of been done retroactively. This will kind of allow us to be a little bit more proactive in identifying these areas, and if we're going in and replacing lines on maybe some of our feeder streets, it will kind of identify we're not only just going to address this area, but wider there, we should maybe go another block or two further, because we've also had some other low-pressure zones in that area. pressure zones in that area that, uh, we may not, uh, be aware of. So this will allow us to kind of look and address some of those problems in there also. That's a good, good question.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Director Bratiger. Um, you mentioned matching, that these are matching grant, uh, matching funds grants. At what percentage will we be matching?
Uh, we, uh, we have, uh, the ability to go all the way up to fifty percent matching, uh, on these, uh, on the, uh, the Department of, uh, of, uh, of Development. Uh, uh, we are only, uh, going to match, uh, we've put an application in only to match ten percent. Uh, we consulted with a number of people that put those grants in there. Uh, they aren't as, uh, uh, it's not as highly weighted as the OPWC, uh, grants are. Actually, the OPWC is highly encourages, uh, up to fifty percent matching. Uh, so we, we plan on going up to that, that amount to receive a maximum amount of points. The other ones, uh, pretty much tell you that it's a good idea.
Okay.
To put, put something in there, but they don't weight them as heavily as we back off on those. After the, uh, review process and, uh, some of the back and forth stuff that goes on, uh, we find out that, uh, if it's, you know, in our best interest to increase those, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll go back and increase, increase those amounts, but, uh, they're up to fifty percent right now.
Very good. It's, it's good that we're in a, a good position that we can actually kind of hedge our bets.
Well, yeah, it is on both of these. Like I said, both of them, uh, actually all three of these have, you know, some, some strings attached to them. Uh, mainly reporting, uh, some of them, you know, do require, uh, a little bit more, uh, more engineering work, a little bit more, uh, uh, costs that, uh, kind of drive up the, unfortunately, the overall, overall cost of the project on these. So sometimes we can, uh, some of these projects we can do in-house and save a lot of money. Uh, but, uh, some of these state and federal funded projects do require you to jump through a few more hoops, which increases the, uh, the cost on that. So we, we, we try to avoid those, you know, when we can, unless it's a really significant project. Last time we used, uh, some of the OPWC was when we did a High Street Water Main, uh, project, and that was pretty significant. That was outside of our in-house wheelhouse anyhow. But some of these other projects depended on, uh, the, uh, the contribution and, and some of the other, uh, you know, strings or baggage that come along with this free money, uh, kind of dictate whether or not we'll, we'll take full advantage, partial advantage, or we'll skip altogether. So we have a lot of flexibility, but, uh, you know, if we're fortunate enough to secure, uh, funding for, from any of these three, uh, mechanisms, uh, yeah, the next couple of years, uh, it would be a lot of work done, uh, on, uh, water and wastewater infrastructure side of the world. And hopefully we'll be able to coordinate as many of these things as we can on the street side. Most of the time we're following Steve, trying to stay one step ahead of him on the streets. And, uh, you know, I pulled him, uh, a couple of weeks ago, you know, we may be able to, we may be having it on, on a couple of streets, uh, just to take advantage of, of the, being able to get down the ground part and, uh, pull, we'll make sure things are done right at the end of the day.
Any other questions or discussion? Yes, Mr. Spears.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this won't really have a bearing on my, uh, decision that I'll make, but just curious, if we don't secure the funding, are these things that we'll be looking to do anyways, or are these, uh, more dependent on the funding?
I'd say yes. Uh, with the exception of maybe the, uh, the central water tower engineering, that one we possibly might boot.
Okay.
If we wouldn't get that, we would still do that project, but, uh, that, that one, that the engineering to do that, uh, was, was higher than we would normally do. We would normally do that work in-house, but, um, because we may have, uh, uh, several more projects, uh, uh, to, uh, to coordinate and manage over the course of the year, it, it might work out to our advantage to be able to have some of that professional engineering done for us there. So with the exception of that one, if we wouldn't receive a grant on that one, we would still do that in-house, but, uh, we would probably not. The total cost we have, the central water tower, would end up costing us at, uh, well, less than forty thousand.
Sure.
We would do, we would do that work in-house and save, save our customers that, that money, that expense.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. It's interesting when you get involved in local government, uh, you often think about all the things that you can see, but, uh, when you get involved in local government, you realize that really what, uh, a big part of what makes a community successful is what is underground, what you can't see, uh, and all the capabilities and the assets that that brings to a community. It's very expensive, it requires a lot of work, uh, but we appreciate the OPWC program because it allows us to leverage a smaller amount of money to get a lot more work done, and everyone in the community benefits from that. So appreciate all your work there. And, uh, I'll just, uh, put in my disclaimer here, this has an emergency clause, it doesn't actually mean there's an emergency somewhere. All that means is that the normal thirty-day waiting period after legislation is passed in order for it to go effect is waived, so it'll go into effect immediately. So with that, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think all of us are, are, uh, pretty much consistently in favor of having a good plan, um, moving forward. This gives us the opportunity to anticipate, uh, growth and, um, changes down the road. And, uh, as you said, and others have said, this is a way to have someone else help us pay for that. Uh, so, given that, I move that the rules, regulations, and statutes requiring the reading of a resolution on three separate days be suspended.
Second.
Mrs. Foye, seconds.
Foye.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Hamburg.
Yes.
Asparis.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mosley.
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
I move Resolution Thirty-two Twenty-One be adopted as read.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Foye.
Wilson.
Yes.
Hamburg.
Yes.
Asparis.
Yes.
Larson.
Yep.
Mosley.
Yes.
Foye.
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
Resolution Thirty-three Twenty-One, I move this resolution be placed on first reading.
Second. Second, Mr. Wilson.
Hamburg.
Yes.
Asparis.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mosley.
Yes.
Foye.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
Resolution Thirty-three Twenty-One, a resolution authorizing the Utility Director to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Department of Development Water and Wastewater Infrastructure Grant Program for grant funds and/or agreements as required to obtain said funds in declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bratiger.
Uh, as I mentioned, the same five projects that we just discussed for the OPWC, uh, grant funding opportunity, uh, will also be submitted to the Ohio Department of Development. Same, same projects, uh, same, uh, same basically, uh, same basic criteria, uh, needs, uh, on it, a little bit different, uh, baggage that comes along, uh, from a record-keeping perspective, but, uh, all five of these projects qualify, uh, to meet those. They have, uh, different, uh, limits on, uh, how much they'll issue the grants out to. Uh, there's a bucket of money that deals with preliminary work, uh, engineering things along that line, and, uh, those, they fund up to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars per project. And if any of these were shovel-ready construction, uh, type projects, uh, they would fund up to five million dollars per project. So none of them apply to this, uh, although some of these funds are around, uh, going into twenty-twenty-two, depending on where we, uh, fall on some of these projects, we, we, we could possibly apply for construction funds in twenty-twenty-two, as well as using this, uh, next round of, uh, ARBA funds that, uh, Mr. Remlin spoke about, or also.
Any questions or discussion?
Mr. President, I move that the rules, regulations, and statutes requiring the reading of a resolution on three separate days be suspended.
Mr. President, a second. Second, Mr. Mosley.
Asparis.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mosley.
Yes.
Foye.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Hamburg.
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
I move Resolution Thirty-three Twenty-One be adopted as read.
Second. Second, Mr. Hamburg.
Larson.
Yes.
Mosley.
Yes.
Foye.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Hamburg.
Yes.
Asparis.
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
Resolution Thirty-four Twenty-One, I move this resolution be placed on first reading.
Second. Second, Mr. Wilson.
Mosley.
Yes.
Foye.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Hamburg.
Yes.
Asparis.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
Resolution Thirty-four Twenty-One, a resolution authorizing the Public Utilities Board of Control of the City of Orville, Ohio, to execute a contract or contracts without bidding for coal supply and ash disposal for a three-year period in declaring an emergency.
Bratiger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, as I indicated in my, uh, I wanted to counsel our coal contract, uh, with our current supplier, uh, Kimball Mining expires December thirty-first of this year. Uh, that was a, a three-year, uh, contract. Um, ever since we saw our production, uh, capability cut in, uh, twenty-seventeen, we entered into a different, uh, uh, place when it comes to, uh, coal for fuel suppliers for us, uh, that being we've been knocked down a few notches to become from a significant purchaser to just somebody that's just not buying a little bit of coal, uh, every year. So the number of players, uh, uh, the past couple of times we've gone out and did have really, uh, diminished quite a bit. Uh, we've gone out and kind of scoured the, uh, uh, the, uh, the region and have talked with some folks, and, uh, I, I think we're, we're going to be able to come up with some suppliers, uh, to, to meet our needs, uh, but, uh, we're, we're going to have to spend a little bit more time, I think, uh, negotiating some pricing and, and some terms, uh, to convince them that, to come up and provide, uh, a small amount of coal that we burn over the course of the year. Uh, the contract value that we're talking about on here is in the neighborhood of around eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year. That's a maximum amount of coal that we would burn, as well as the, uh, corresponding amount of, uh, ash, uh, materials that go back into the, into landfill. Uh, our estimated, uh, expenses that we'll be spending will probably be in the neighborhood of about half a million dollars. Just to give you some kind of idea contractually where, uh, the contract value of this is. Uh, four years ago, this was about a twelve-million-dollar contract, so we, uh, you know, we're burning about ten, uh, you know, less than ten percent of the amount of fuel, uh, these days as, as we have been. Uh, we're also going to, uh, since it's, uh, going to be a little bit more difficult, at least in my opinion, to get somebody onboard, uh, I'm going to, uh, have some provisions for some, uh, some extensions for this contract, so if we, uh, we get onboard, we have some good relationships with, uh, with the supplier in the first three years, uh, we'll have an option to, uh, maybe extend out this contract about number one or two years without having to come back and go through the, uh, the bidding process again. Uh, and with that, I'll take any, any questions that you, that you have here.
Yes, Mr. Hamburg.
I am completely confident that you've already looked at this, but there's no other, like, group purchasing or AMP or any type of smaller groups you can roll into.
Uh, no, there's not. No. Uh, there, uh, are, uh, our other, uh, small buyers are ones located down in Dover, the city of Dover, uh, and Painesville, uh, up, up on Lake. Uh, our current supplier also supplies fuel to the, uh, city of Dover. Um, I, I won't rule out an opportunity that we might, uh, look at, uh, an agreement possibly with the city to, uh, to pick up coal they, they burn. They'll burn, uh, quite a bit more coal than we do here, uh, so I've been talking with, uh, their folks down there to see if there might be something dependent on the interest level from the other, other suppliers, pricing, and, you know, some of those other terms. Uh, but as far as, uh, trying to consolidate things, uh, group buying, uh, we truly are the last three in the state. Uh, there's only, uh, uh, four small municipal coal-fired, uh, utilities left in the country. So we, uh, our, our command in the market, uh, is practically nonexistent from a, uh, from a buying power, uh, perspective. We're up there more for convenience, uh, with some of these folks, and, uh, you know, a little, little more, uh, unfortunately, uh, at their mercy than, than us kind of coming in and dictating, uh, some terms. The good thing is that, you know, there, you know, there still are, uh, suppliers that are in the region, so it's not, uh, a lack of fuel, it's the, it's the inconvenience of bringing it from kind of southeastern Ohio up, up this way. So we, you know, I feel confident that we'll, we'll, we'll be able to secure sources, you know, we may not be, uh, entirely thrilled with the cost of the fuel, but, uh, the good news is when, uh, a few ti- a few times we are burning fuel, it's during these peak times, and, uh, most of the time those, uh, those higher wholesale market power costs that we're selling into the market, uh, come close to covering what our fuel costs are in addition to the savings, uh, which are the, the big value added, uh, piece when we are, uh, meeting all these, uh, uh, top-five transmission fees. That's where we're, we're, uh, we're saving anywhere from seven and a half to nine million dollars in transmission costs, so. That answer?
Yeah, it does. I, I assumed that you already had looked.
Yeah, well, we, you know, we started pretty far ahead. Uh, we did start talking a little bit earlier. That's when I saw the, uh, the pack kind of, kind of shrink down to a little bit smaller group of, uh, entities that we're, we're, we're looking at. Uh, when we get out, we send a big giant, uh, formal bid packages, uh, uh, for the small volume, so we, we end up losing a lot of interest right off the bat, so it's a lot easier to just send out our, our specs, you just start having those kind of little one-on-one hours, conversations out there. And, uh, the process goes maybe a little bit slower, but it's, it's been, uh, the past couple of times when we've had to negotiate these smaller volumes of coal, we've actually probably come out a little bit, uh, a little bit ahead and actually add some, if you can call it competition, you know, we only had three people bid, uh, last go-round on that. And, uh, I'll be surprised if we have that many just go-round. Pretty sure we'll have to, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And again, there, you know, I've dead-assed, uh, you know, if, you know, if it's, uh, if you're comfortable with that, if we would, uh, the sooner we get the, uh, the green light to move forward with, with these discussions, that'll, that'll give me a little bit more breathing room to have everything in place, uh, before the end of the year. Thank you.
Mr. President, I, I feel that, uh, knowing that we need to do this anyhow, uh, the contract ends at the end of December, um, as much time as we can give Mr. Bratiger to do this as possible, um, we should give him. So I move the rules, regulations, and statutes requiring the reading of a resolution on three separate days be suspended.
Second. Second, Mr. Hamburg.
Foye.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Hamburg.
Yes.
Asparis.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mosley.
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
I move Resolution Thirty-four Twenty-One be adopted as read.
Second. Second, Mr. Mosley.
Wilson.
Yes.
Hamburg.
Yes.
Asparis.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mosley.
Yes.
Foye.
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
Resolution Thirty-five Twenty-One, I move this resolution be placed on first reading.
Second. Second, Mr. Wilson.
Hamburg.
Yes.
Asparis.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mosley.
Yes.
Foye.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
Resolution Thirty-five Twenty-One, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorize, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Mr. Remlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just to give you a little bit of background, uh, this legislation is brought to council every year at this time. Uh, after you approve the budget in July, it's forwarded to the Wayne County Auditor for review by the Budget Commission. If they are okay with our budget estimates, then they will send... If they are okay with our budget estimates, then they will send this resolution for property tax collection. And so basically, what you're authorizing is the auditor to have the ability to collect taxes on our behalf. Legislation does not have to be passed this evening, but it does need to be returned by September 30th. So we will have to pass it at the next meeting.
Any questions or discussion?
I feel that this is a necessary item, and even though it may not have to be passed this evening, we may as well do that. We're going to be doing it in two weeks if we don't do it tonight. So I move the rules, regulations, and statutes requiring the reading of a resolution on three separate days be suspended.
Second?
Second, Mrs. Foye.
Asparis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mosley?
Yes.
Foye?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Hamberg?
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
I move Resolution 3521 be adopted as read.
Second?
Second, Mrs. Foye.
Larson?
Yes.
Mosley?
Yes.
Foye?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Hamberg?
Yes.
Asparis?
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
Press on.
Resolution 3621. I move this resolution be placed on first reading.
Second?
Second, Mr. Mosley.
Mosley?
Yes.
Foye?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Hamberg?
Yes.
Asparis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
Resolution 3621. A resolution authorizing the Board of Control to enter into an agreement and/or agreements with Graystone Construction through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing for the design, build of a salt bin and declaring an emergency.
Another exciting item for council to take action on, so tell us about it.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Mr. Mosley mentioned, his summary was right on the money. It's a purchase of a construction of a new salt bin. That bin will go behind the existing salt bin we have. We also have a smaller salt bin adjacent to the Lacy Center that is on the verge of demolishing itself, if you know what I mean. So that one would be removed. That'll also open up some areas for the brine system as well on that location. So this new salt bin would go behind the existing bin. It would allow us to hold more than twice as much as what we're currently able. As Mr. Mosley mentioned, we do hit situations where if we have a week of just heavy snow where the salt's flying out off the shelf, so to speak, that we kind of have to wait until there's more room in order to order. And then by the time the order comes, we're not running out of... There's been a few times, I think Ryan and I have been like, "Hope the salt comes soon," you know, that kind of thing. So this will allow us to store more. As a result, we will be more efficient. I already think we are really efficient, but then there's no, like, chewing nails, if you will, of waiting for the salt to arrive. And it would also open up some opportunities with the existing bin for some other storage as well, with some different materials that we're currently, don't have anywhere to store as well. So also, as Mr. Mosley mentioned, as everyone's aware, the steel prices are fluctuating tremendously. We have been informed that this particular project will go up in the next few weeks due to an anticipated steel increase in cost.
Glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Mosley?
Just for a quick note, this is also a project that complements our brine legislation that we passed, help with the efficiency of our response to the snow. Also, there's just a couple of areas that we would like to really hone in on, heels and everything. And the goal is wet pavement on snowstorms, right?
Yes, sir.
So with that, I definitely would like to see this go tonight, if that's all right with council.
Let me get started on it. Very good.
Also, too, it probably behooves us to have more capacity than not enough, correct? I mean...
Currently, Mr. Larson, if we have any extra, we literally haul it over to Doughton. They store some for us. We have sold some in the past because we didn't have the storage area for it. So, yeah, we definitely would prefer to retain it and have it ready to go when we need it rather than kind of scramble to try to set it aside somewhere or sell it.
I think this is a project that we can all be behind. It makes sense, and I hate to be the first one to say it, but one or be here before we know it. I move the rules, regulations, and statutes requiring the reading of a resolution on three separate days be suspended.
Second?
Second, Mr. Mosley.
Foye?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Hamberg?
Yes.
Asparis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mosley?
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
I move Resolution 3621 be adopted as read.
Second?
Second, Mr. Mosley.
Wilson?
Yes.
Hamberg?
Yes.
Asparis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mosley?
Yes.
Foye?
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
Resolution 3721. I move this resolution be placed on first reading.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Spirits.
Hamberg?
Yes.
Asparis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mosley?
Yes.
Foye?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
Resolution 3721. A resolution to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Orville, Ohio, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Remlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a change to our 2021 final appropriations that council approved in March. The first change is to make an allocation for the expenditures out of the American Rescue Fund. The second change is to provide for an allocation for our Unclaimed Monies Fund that was established last year. We are going to make the transfer this month, so we need to have an allocation available if someone steps forward to claim those funds so we can issue a check.
Any questions or discussion?
The timing of this resolution.
You're fine if you want to let it go another reading?
Okay.
Or two?
Leave something free to act on next time.
There we go.
All right, very well. That concludes this evening's business. Does anyone have any comments for the good of the order?
Just one, I have one.
Yes.
During the community day, I mentioned volunteers. Councilman Larson and I became such a pair of umpires that we've been notified by the Major League Baseball. But I told him we were way too busy.
Oh, wow, okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Well, that's unfortunate, but I just wanted to take a minute as well to recognize one of our members of council, Mr. Larson, who announced this week, or last week, I should say, that, was it this past Sunday's column was the last? Yeah. So as you know, he's had a column in the Daily Record for several years. I think he said over 1,000 columns, yeah.
Twenty-one years.
Yeah, 21 years. Never missed a deadline, so that's an impressive accomplishment. And it's just, you know, commentary on the state of newspapers today that, you know, his column is, you know, not going to be included anymore. So we're sorry to see that part go. But I just wanted to publicly thank Mr. Larson and his wife, Kristen, for their contribution to our community and to all of us here for what they've done for us and bringing some humor to us every weekend for so long. So John, it's just part of your overall service to all of us, and we're glad for it and appreciate your contribution there.
Well, that was very unexpected, but thank you. And, you know, I guess my message would be, don't give up on local news. Your local newspaper is a source of information that can't really be replaced. So, you know, I may be done, but the newspaper is not, so please don't give up.
We look forward to seeing what's next from you.
Thank you.
All right, Bratiger, any other comments? All right, if not, I will entertain the motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Good.
Second?
Second, Mr. Morrison.
Asparis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mosley?
Yes.
Foye?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Hamberg?
Yes.
All eyes, motion passes.
Very good. We are adjourned until September 20th, 2021. Have a good evening.